I call this September 25th, 2018, regular council meeting to order. And this is the meeting of the Portsmouth City Council. And our invocation tonight is by Pastor Gregory Yancey, the pastor of New Morning Star Missionary Baptist Church. And I'll ask my colleagues to stand for the invocation. And then after the invocation, if everybody would stand, and I'll ask the Scout Masters for Boy Scout Troop 210, 256, and 95 to come to the front of the council chamber and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Yancey.
Let us pray. Most holy wise God, from everlasting to everlasting thou art God. Lord be come, thanking you, Lord, for yet another brand-new day. But, Lord, as we gather here tonight, Father, we pray now that your leading and your wisdom, God, would be upon all of the leaders and council and the mayor of our city, God, that you again will bless them as they come together to share all the moments that take place for our historical, beautiful city of Portsmouth, Virginia. Father, we ask your blessing to be with them in God's decision that has to be made, that your wisdom, God, will lead and guide each of them. Father, we ask these blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Now, if the members of Scout Troop 210, 256, and 95 come forward, please. And we will follow your lead, so if you'll give us the command.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, and thank you for being scouts. Let's give them a hand. Ladies and gentlemen, our voting board is not working tonight. It's malfunctioned. And so all of our votes tonight will be by roll call. And our electronic indicator of who wants to have the floor is not working either. So, members of council, again, if you want the floor, please indicate orally, please. And with that, we'll do our roll call. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mayor Rowe?
Here.
Seven members of City Council are present.
Thank you, ma'am. The next, we have a special presentation of a proclamation to declare a certain day... No. Minutes. Thank you. We do. We...I'm out of order. Our next order of business is the approval of the minutes. And we have the minutes of a call meeting of August 25th, 2018. We have the minutes of a call meeting of August 28th, 2018. And we have the minutes of a regular meeting of August 28th, 2018. And a call meeting of September the 10th, 2018. We'll consider all these in one motion as our motion to approve.
Move adoption, second.
We have a motion made by Councilman Moody, seconded by Councilman Smith. Any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes.
The minutes are adopted, seven-zero.
Good. Now, we come to special presentation proclaiming Manufacturing Day. And representing the...we have representatives from the Portsmouth Port and Industrial Authority, plus our Economic Development Director. If they would come forward, please. I'll call on our Economic Development Director to introduce the members of the PPIC. This is our Director, Robert Moore, and I'm going to provide an editorial comment. He's awesome.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, we have with us, again, myself, Robert Moore. And then we also have the Chairman of the Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission, Chairman James Bento, and then another Commissioner, Mr. Ned Barham. Thank you.
Well, one of the things that I get to do as mayor is to make proclamations. And this is a proclamation declaring October 5th, 2018, as Manufacturing Day. And it reads, "Whereas Manufacturing Day is an annual celebration of modern manufacturing during which manufacturers highlight or are highlighted for their contributions, including students, educators, the businesses, the community, and elected officials in a collective effort to educate all citizens about manufacturing. And whereas recognizing October 5th as National Manufacturing Day in Portsmouth is an effective way to highlight the importance of manufacturing in Portsmouth and what it means to our economy, and to draw attention to the rewarding jobs that manufacturing offers to all of our citizens. And whereas the City of Portsmouth, its Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission, its Portsmouth Economic Development Authority are supportive of the efforts of businesses that make up the manufacturing sector of Portsmouth's economy, whether they be related to the port or any other industrial segments of our economy. And whereas today's manufacturing jobs are highly skilled and take place in some of the most exciting, innovative work environments anywhere, and that's here in Portsmouth, Manufacturing Day should be viewed as a vehicle for inspiring students to pursue manufacturing careers and strengthen the future of manufacturing by getting involved in jobs that are very futuristic. And whereas Portsmouth recognizes our local businesses that contribute to the city's long-term health and economic development by employing Portsmouth residents and providing products and services around the world from here in the City of Portsmouth. Now, therefore, I, John Rowe, Mayor, do hereby proclaim the week of October 5th, 2018, as Manufacturing Day in Portsmouth, and I urge all of our citizens to join in supporting and all of our manufacturers here." And with that, I'd like to give the proclamation to the Chairman of the PPIC.
Thank you, Mayor Rowe. I'd like to thank the mayor and certainly City Council and, you know, City Manager and staff, because we're all going to work together on this. Generally, in the cities that have Manufacturing Day, there's a fair built around that day. And the city has agreed to do that with us. And some of the businesses in Portsmouth will host that fair. And it's a job fair and a business recruitment fair. So, it's a very interesting day, and we're very grateful that the city has embraced this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, again, October 5th, Manufacturing Day here in Portsmouth. And these are highly skilled jobs, and we encourage everybody to join in the celebration of this great day. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you read the protocol for speakers, please?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council's rules require a limited up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you. Our next item are three public hearings. This is item 18-363. And the way we will proceed is that before we have the public hearing, I'll ask the clerk to read the title of the public hearing. And then I'll ask the applicant to come to the lectern. We'll have...give the applicant 10 minutes to explain the application. And then after that explanation, I'll call upon the City Manager to see if there are any comments from the City Manager and her team. And then we'll open the public hearing. And with that, would you read the caption of the first public hearing, please?
Yes, sir. Item A, Z1804, West Norfolk. Richard Barbie requests a rezoning of property at 4940 West Norfolk Road from high-density urban residential to general mixed use for a real estate office. The comprehensive plan recommends commercial development. Planning Commission recommends approval.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Yes, sir. If you'll come to the lectern and identify yourself, your name and address. And you have 10 minutes, sir.
Good evening. I will leave the 10 minutes. This is fairly quick and simple. I'm Richard Barbie, the owner of Warrant Realty. I'm a Virginia Beach resident, but I love Portsmouth because I served here for several years in the Coast Guard. Our application is to rezone that property at 4940 West Norfolk Road to move our real estate company from Chesapeake in the Greenbrier area to Portsmouth. Portsmouth is a Coast Guard city. We're Coast Guard retirees. We don't feel that by moving real estate to that area that it would in any way hurt the area, it would actually enhance the area. The building's been vacant for years, and we feel that we can have quite the contribution to the City of Portsmouth by being allowed to rezone that building.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Patton.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, I will ask Mr. Bob Bowen to come forward, please.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Simmons, members of council. As you have been explaining to hear, this is a rezoning request for the property here on the corner of West Norfolk Road and Cedar Lane. This has a bank building on it that has been vacant for approximately seven years. And this went through the Planning Commission. They're meeting on August the 7th. And after their public hearing, the Planning Commission voted six to zero to recommend approval.
Any questions of Mr. Bowen? Thank you, sir. And with that, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak to this matter either for or against? And if you desire to speak, please come to the lectern and state your name and address. Is there anybody who wants to speak either for or against this application? Seeing none, hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed. This matter is on its first reading. Oh, good. Thank you. Counsel...Vice Mayor Simmons.
Thank you, sir. It's my pleasure to make a motion to approve this. We've met...you and I specifically have met Mr. Barbie several times at Coast Guard Day picnics. And I know he's a former coastie himself, and his business has been very supportive of the Coast Guard community, particularly in Churchillan. And I'm always glad to see a business move from Greenbrier to Portsmouth. Thank you, sir.
So, you're...you have a motion?
I may make a motion for approval.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion that's been made by Vice Mayor Simmons, seconded jointly. I don't know who was first.
Moody went first.
Councilman Moody. Any discussion on the motion which is to approve? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes when the roll is called, or no if you're against the motion. Madam Clerk, would you call for the vote? Call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes.
The item is approved, seven-zero.
Good. Which brings us to the next public hearing. And Madam Clerk, would you read that caption, please?
Yes, sir. Item BUP 1805, Midtown, request of the City of Portsmouth to obtain a use permit to erect a 300-foot communications tower for emergency management 911 radio communications at 2017 Frederick Boulevard. The proposed tower will replace the existing communications tower located at the city's Public Works Facility. This area is designated on the future land use map in the comprehensive plan as a mixed-use corridor. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you, ma'am. Because the city is the applicant, Dr. Patton.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council, I will call Mr. Ron Guthrie, who is the Project Manager for Motorola Solutions, to speak to this project.
And sir, if you would state your name and address, and you have five minutes. Excuse me, 10. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. For the record, my name is Ron Guthrie, Project Manager, Motorola Solutions, office located 1742 East Param Road in Recco, Virginia, 23228. I'm the PM responsible for the implementation of the City of Portsmouth Public Safety Radio System. This system will provide public safety communication. I am here today on behalf of the applicant, the City of Portsmouth. In addition, I have with me today Eric Cole, who is the Civil Professional Engineer of Record, and Mike Harper, Radio System Consultant. This is a view of the applicant's site there. The site is marked. Next slide, please. Currently, the public safety communication relies on a single tower located at 2017 Frederick Boulevard that was built in 1986. Communication towers are built to meet structural standards. These standards are updated regularly to address lessons learned, evolve in infrastructure equipment requirement, ice and wind loading requirement. The existing tower at Frederick Boulevard does not meet the current structural standard, TIA 222-G. Next slide, please. There is obvious surface corrosion on all of tower members, and the hollow tower legs are likely to be corroded on the inside as well. The plan is to replace the existing tower at Frederick Boulevard with a new tower of the same size. The new tower will be designed to carry extra capacity to allow for growth and for compliance with stricter future versions of standards. Next slide, please. As you can see, the current radio system slide of existing coverage on the left doesn't provide adequate handheld...and this is a handheld portable radio, just for reference, coverage north and south of I-164 and Cedar Lane. The lack of coverage is a safety hazard for city personnel and potential to the citizens they serve. When city personnel cannot properly communicate or coordinate their response, request backup, and additional support, it becomes difficult to deliver the services needed they are tasked to provide, fire, and EMS. The public safety radio system upgrade uses two tower sites with a location at Frederick Boulevard and southwest...and West Norfolk Road as part of the comprehensive coverage design for public safety. The drawing photo on the right, the blue area, shows the coverage with two tower sites. Next slide, please. This is an overview of the Frederick Boulevard site. Next slide, please. This is the detailed plan showing the existing tower with the new tower and shelter. You can see the two towers. After the system is implemented, cut over, and operational, the old tower will be demolished. Next slide, please. This is a view of the vertical view of the tower with the antennas at Frederick. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
With that, we'll open the public hearing. This is a public hearing on UP 1805. Is there anybody that wants to speak either for or against this application? If you desire to speak, come to the lectern and state your name and address. Does anybody want to speak? Hearing none, this public hearing is closed. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion made by Councilwoman Lucas Burke, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on the motion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes.
This item is approved, seven-zero.
Which brings us to our next and last public hearing. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption for this public hearing, please?
Yes, sir. Item CUP 1806, Churchillan, request of the City of Portsmouth to obtain a use permit to erect a new 300-foot communications tower for emergency management 911 radio communications at Zero West Norfolk Road, approximately .35 miles east of Cedar Lane. The proposed tower is intended to improve 911 radio service in the Churchillan area. This area is designated on the future land use map in the comprehensive plan for transportation. Planning Commission recommends approval with conditions.
Thank you, ma'am. Because the city is the applicant, I'll call on Dr. Patton on behalf of the applicant.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council, I call once again Mr. Ron Guthrie, Project Manager for Motorola Solutions.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. For the record, my name is Ron Guthrie, Project Manager, Motorola Solutions, office located 1742 East Param Road in Recco, Virginia. I'm the PM responsible for the implementation of the City of Portsmouth Public Safety Radio System. The system will provide public safety communication, and I am here today on behalf of the applicant, the City of Portsmouth. In addition, I have with me Eric Cole, who is the Civil Professional Engineer of Record, and Mike Harper, Consultant. Next slide, please. This is showing the applicant location, which is marked. Next slide, please. This is the aerial view of the site with the star showing the location of the...of West Norfolk. Next slide, please. This is a view where the arrows are located, showing the street view on West Norfolk Churchillan site. Next slide, please. As you can see, the current system coverage slide of existing coverage is on the left, doesn't provide adequate handheld coverage north and west of I-164 and Cedar Lane. The slack of coverage is a safety hazard for city personnel and potential to the citizens they serve. When city personnel cannot properly communicate or coordinate their response, request backup, and additional support, it becomes difficult to deliver the services they are tasked to provide. The public safety radio system upgrade uses two tower sites with a location at Frederick Boulevard and West Norfolk Road as part of a comprehensive coverage design for public safety operations. Next slide, please. This slide shows a view of the overall parcel showing the proposed site and showing that trees would be left and screening landscape will be added if needed. We are aware of the trails, rail-to-trails project, and this will have no impact on that project. We will elevate the shelter five foot for mission critical to avoid any potential water damage. Next slide, please. This slide shows the proposed equipment enclosure. It's a tower site, a shelter. There's a parking lot with a gate. We are considering moving the gate for the parking lot down to the lower part at the entry point, not to interfere with the rails and trails. Next slide, please. This is a vertical view of the proposed tower. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, sir. Mr. Brandon, how soon after approval would the developers begin to build out? And how long would it take to complete the project?
Our projected plans, once we get the construction drawings and everything approved through planning, we are estimating approximately six months to construct the tower and build it up. So, the total period of time could be up to nine months.
Any other questions? Yes.
I'm just really happy to see you here. We've been talking about this for five years, six years, 10 years, a long time since I've been on council, and this is like we're finally getting there. It's long overdue and well-needed.
Thank you. We look forward to it.
Thank you. Any other questions? So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion that's been made by Councilman Clark, seconded by Vice Mayor Simmons. Any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes.
The item is approved, seven-zero.
This brings us to City Manager's Report, and the first item is 18-364, which is the consideration and adoption of a certain ordinance. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please? At that roll, will you read the caption of the ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $552,761 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and appropriating said amount in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for use by the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office for a victim witness program.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes.
The item is adopted, seven-zero.
This brings us to item 18-365, which is the consideration of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend Section 2-790 of Chapter 2 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, as amended to expand the Community Criminal Justice Board by designating four new members.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion to approve the ordinance to adopt it. Any... Any discussion? Hearing none, will you call the roll on this question to adopt?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes.
The item is adopted seven zero.
Thank you, ma'am. Which brings us to item 18-366, which is the consideration of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of that ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting radiological emergency preparedness program funding in the amount of $700 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating said amount in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? We're ready for the question. Well, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll on this question to, but we have a motion? We got it.
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes.
Which brings us to item 18-367, which is the consideration and adoption of ordinance
accepting certain grant funds. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting education and training voucher funding in the amount of $5,252 from the Virginia Department of Social Services and appropriating said sum in the FY 2019 Social Services Fund for use by the Department of Social Services.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move adoption.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion, which is to adopt the ordinance? Hearing done, we're ready for the question. And Madam Clerk, will you call the roll on the question?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes.
Which brings us to 18-368, which is the consideration of adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting and with appreciation, a donation of $6,000 from Green Acres Presbyterian Church and appropriating said funds to the FY 2019 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Social Services to support operations of the Services Intake Unit.
Thank you. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll on the question?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes.
Which brings us to 18-369, which is the consideration of ordinance accepting certain grant funds. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of that ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $33,511 from the U.S. Department of Transportation, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration through the Virginia Highway Safety Office and appropriating said funds in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department to deter driving under the influence of alcohol.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll on this question?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes.
Which brings us to item 18-370, which is the adoption of a certain ordinance. And would you read the caption of that ordinance, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $21,576 from the U.S. Department of Transportation, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration through the Virginia Highway Safety Office and appropriating said funds in the FY 2019 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department to deter speeding.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, we're ready for the question. And Madam Clerk, will you call the roll on this question?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes.
Item 18-371, which is the consideration and adoption of a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute a certain agreement. And Madam Clerk, would you read that caption, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute an amendment to that certain memorandum of agreement dated March 10, 2014, with Hampton Road Sanitation District and 12 other localities regarding wet weather sanitary sewer overflows.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made to adopt the resolution, and it's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done. We're ready for the question. And the question is to adopt. Will you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes.
We're now at new business, and that's item 18-372, Boards and Commissions. And we have a motion recommendation from Councilwoman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that the following reappointments and appointments be approved. The reappointments are Board of Building Code Appeals, Michelle Burton; Supplemental Retirement Board, Landon Moore. Regular appointments are Board of Zoning Appeals, Barbara Smith and David, excuse me, David Stevenson, alternate; Community Criminal Justice Board, David Hackworth, who's the superintendent; and LaVores Pace, our own Deputy City Manager; Community Policy Management Team, Alexandria Davis; History Commission, Clifford King Harpen; Joseph McClure; Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals, Bryant Thomas; Law Library Board, Latoya Hite; Museum and Fine Arts Commission, Lynn Cottingham; Parks and Recreation Commission, Crystal Phillips; Portsmouth Parking Authority, Judith McGinley; Supplemental Retirement Board, David Holly; Mark Gardner; Herman Covey; and the Towing Advisory Board, Judith McGinley; and the Wetlands Board, Douglas Union. That concludes.
Thank you. Sir, second.
Second.
We have a motion before us to make these reappointments and appointments. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes.
The next item is items submitted by councilmembers, and we have the consideration of a resolution. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the resolution?
Yes, sir. A resolution confirming a declaration of local emergency due to the threat of Hurricane Florence impacting Portsmouth, Virginia.
And so that we can consider this matter as a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have before us the consideration and adoption of a resolution, and you've heard the caption. We're ready to discuss it. And we do have one speaker, Mark Godogee Yotrowski, and sir, you have five minutes.
Sorry, sir. I had intended to sign up for 371 rather than 372.
I'm sorry. Would you come to the lectern, please?
Signed up for the wrong item. I had intended that to be for 371 rather than 372.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. We have the motion to adopt. Is there any discussion?
No.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes.
And the Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Simmons.
Yes, sir. I still have activities going on between now and our next session of interest to the public. This coming Saturday, the 29th of September, is the 2018 Virginia Craft Beer and Wine Festival at the Union Bank and Trust Pavilion. That's a ticketed event that should be a lot of fun. On Sunday afternoon, our Fraternal Order of Police Gospel Lodge 20 is having their first annual beer, band, and barbecue event to raise money for the FOP. They are also taking donations of non-perishable items for hurricane victims, Brothers and Sisters in Blue in North Carolina, that they intend to take to them. That event is Sunday, September 30, from noon to 6:00, and it's at the Harley-Davidson Dealership on Frederick Boulevard. Also, on Saturday, the 29th, from 10:00 to 4:00, at the Crossroads United Methodist Church, the Santa House is having a Santa Fall fling, if you want to get in the Christmas spirit. It's a family-friendly, free event. Santa will be there. There will be prizes, foods and drink, fun things for children, vendors, old cars, all makes and models, and lots of fun things to do on Saturday. On Monday, October 15, we want to remind everyone that that is the last day to register to vote in order to vote in this coming November 6 elections. You can register to vote at a variety of places, including the first floor of the City Hall Building at 801 Crawford Street. The registrar's office is open from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. And I've said a couple of times that we were having informational sessions for our citizens on Medicaid expansion. We have the next one coming up that will be presented by the Portsmouth Department of Social Services and Health and Human Services, and this session will be at the Social Services offices on Thursday, October 4, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. And it's designed to give information to civic leagues that they can give back out to their folks in their communities. The next event after that will be Thursday, November 1. And for now, that's all, sir.
Good. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Even though we dodged, thankfully, we dodged a bullet on the hurricane, we were prepared for it as a city and opened three shelters. I visited those shelters, Wilson High School, Church of Middle, and Norcombe High School. I must say, I was impressed with the preparation and the attention to detail in each of the shelters. So kudos to staff and all those people who manned each of the shelters. We were ready for a big storm, even though it thankfully missed us. But it's good to know that in light of such an event, that our city does have a plan, and it looked like it really came together in fine fashion. So I salute all those involved in putting that together.
Thank you, sir. I was surveying, any other requests to speak? Okay. This comes to item 18-374, report on pending items.
Mayor.
Mr. City, Madam City Manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, we have no pending item.
Thank you. Brings us to item 18-375, non-agenda speakers. And our first speaker is Sean Semeli.
Yes, sir.
And sir, you have five minutes?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor. Mayor. My name is Sean Semeli. I live at 114 Erickson Street, right here in Craddock. I've been a resident of Portsmouth all my life, for 49 years. I received a letter from the City of Portsmouth stating that I am in city violation code with a six-foot fence, that is which is deemed on my property. I installed the fence due to a dog incident that I had with my dog. But I put up a six-foot fence due to the court. I am being told to remove the fence. The reason I come to you is because I'm being told that there's a $350 fee to sit down with four members downstairs on the fifth floor to discuss this, non-refundable, win or lose. The code was revised at the beginning of this year, and the reason I'm here is because I am protecting what is mine, what belongs to me, is my dogs. I've already had several dogs try to get in my yard to fight my dogs, and my fence is up with the code due to the code of the court. I've had animal control come out, look at the fence, and they have no problem with the fence. I'm being told that I am within 50, I have to have 50% transparent, Mr. Mayor. Where my neighbor sits at is behind my house. My house was built in 1936. I cannot help the way the house was built, okay? So I have 57 feet from where the last post I sat to the corner. Anybody that comes up Erickson has to roll to the corner to see the stop sign and to be able to look to your left and to your right to look down Gillis. My fence is not in the way at all. I am within code, and I am coming to you as my mayor to ask for your help. That is what I'm here for, because my dogs are my world, like my family is. That is why I'm here to you.
Sir, you're addressing all of council, not just one person?
I'm addressing all.
Okay. I just wanted to make that point. This is a chance for citizens to address council. Do you have any more?
All I'm asking is for your help and to let everyone know what the codes are and when they're being revised, because I've just found out myself. I printed this up due to a neighbor of mine, and you cannot download their PDF file. You have to screenshot it. And to screenshot it, that is a lot. So it's a public record. We should be able to get to it and be able to see the codes and when they're revised and when they're not revised. And no one is being, I'm not being told when they're being revised. I just happened to find out by going online and finding it myself. That's all I got here.
Thank you. Dr. Patton, could you have the appropriate staff person get with the speaker and get the pertinent information and look into the matter for us?
Yes, sir. And we'll report back and get with the citizen. Mr. Baldwin, would you get with him?
Our next speaker is Sergio O'Neil, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council in Portsmouth Public. My name is Sergio O'Neil, and I reside at 1560 Darn Circle here in the City of Portsmouth. I just had a quick question as far as the use of Portsmouth Recreation Facilities. An organization that I've worked very closely with would like to hold a forum, a nonpartisan forum, for our candidates running in this year's election. However, there's been some confusion as to what this procedure is, because the requested facility is a city facility, and the person that made the request was told that the city does not, and I guess, participate in those type of, in those type of events, would not you allow the city, would not allow for that to take place in a city building. I just wanted clarification on what the procedures are on that, because again, this is a nonpartisan and non-endorsing event. It's just for any candidate to come out, you know, that would like to come out and speak to the facility is a city facility, and the person that made the request was told that the city does not, and I guess, participate in those type of, in those type of events, would not you allow the city, would not allow for that to take place in a city building. I just wanted clarification on what the procedures are on that, because again, this is a nonpartisan and nonendorsing event. It's just for any candidate to come out, you know, that would like to come out and speak to the attendees. One of the ideas behind it was to have this forum was due to the fact that we wanted to see if we could have people just come and ask questions directly of the candidates instead of those questions being scripted by anybody. We, you know, it's encouraging citizen involvement and, you know, and holding our people that are running or are currently sitting accountable for what's taking place in our city. And I just wanted to see, you know, where the clarification is on how the city sees that, you know, sees that type of event taking place.
Thank you. Dr. Patton, could you have the appropriate staff person get the details on this and work with the city attorney to get a response?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, I will. Mr. Pace will meet with Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Donna Si. Ma'am, you have five minutes.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Let's talk about the citizens' money for a change. On the agenda tonight, six grants were voted on, one to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, one to the Fire Department, two to the Social Service Department, and two to the Police Department. The first question, how come the money is not outlined in a statement along with the budget page at the work session? The public needs to keep up with money coming into the budget and money going out of it. We need a comprehensive structure in our system of government that educates all citizens about how our tax money is spent. The structure will also allow all employees of the city to be able to have their needs met. There's talk about communication with fiber optics. Employees can communicate face to face. It appears that fiber optics are more important than employees. It is more important to spend money on equipment than meeting the needs of the employees. With that and organizational structure, how are the city employees getting their five basic needs met? The physiological, the safety and security, the social and affiliation, the esteem, and the self-actualization needs. Does the city workplace meet the physiological or survival needs by providing adequate compensation, rest periods, labor-saving devices, and effective, efficient work methods? And I need to see how the city provides these. Safety and security needs are met by having fringe benefits, job security, sound policies and practices, proper supervision, and safe working conditions. I want to see these sound policies and practices. I'd like to see how proper supervision is carried out. Social and affiliation needs are met by employees having opportunities to interact and network. They have team-based work, and they have friendly coworkers. I want to see where these opportunities to interact and network are. How is team-based work applied when the organizational structure is not completed? Esteemed needs are met by the employees having the freedom to make decisions. They have status symbols. They have recognition awards. Their work is challenging. They have opportunities for advancement, and they share in decision-making. I want to see where employees have an opportunity to make decisions. There are no lines of communication on the organizational chart nor with the boards and commissions, so how do employees make decisions? Self-actualization needs are met when employees have an opportunity to be involved in planning their work, an opportunity for growth and development, and to be creative in their work. I want to see how employees plan their work and have an opportunity for growth and development. Why doesn't the city have a flow chart that shows how everyone employed in the city communicates with each other? We need a comprehensive organizational chart for our city government, which the administrator is responsible to provide to help the employees get their five basic needs met. Next, how do the elected meet the needs of the people? One way is to manage the people's money efficiently. Are the elected managing the people's money economically? What about spending $75,000 on a poverty study when the director of social services could have attended a free workshop and learned about the hidden rules of class and saved the people their expense? There are hidden rules for the poverty class or the dependent class. The rule for possessions are people. Money is to be used or spent. Personality is for entertainment. Social emphasis is to include people they like. The food rule, do you have enough? Quantity is important, not did you have enough or quantity. The driving force rule is for survival, relationships, and entertainment. Compare what the middle-class rules to the dependent class. For the middle class, the rule for possessions is have things, not people. Money is to be managed, not spent. Personality, values, achievement, not entertainment. Social emphasis is on self-governance and self-sufficiency, not on social inclusion of people they like. The food rule is, did you like it?